Thank you.
I'm here, hello?
Are we ready?
We are ready.
On record?
Let me call to order the City of Lincoln City's special city council meeting of Monday, May 18th, 2020 at 4:00 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Here.
Van Kuz?
Present.
Rick Mark?
I'm here.
And Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Hey, I disappeared.
Oh, you're there.
I see you.
I don't see you guys.
Oh.
Uh, okay, help, guys, what do I do?
Is there a little square in the right-hand upper corner?
Um, no.
No, no little square box?
No. I see, yes, when prompted, select yes. If nothing prompts from browser, download and run.
Did you do, push that, download and run? That's what mine says, and I just pushed that.
All right.
Where does she run to?
The kitchen?
Stay put, Judy, just push the button.
I did. Oh, yeah, I see people. Join a meeting, what happened? Oh, there you are.
You must have had an interlaid.
Well, now what do I do? Hold on. Ah! This is so exciting here. Nope.
So you've got audio? You can hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, let's go ahead, uh...
All right.
Keep playing, because we can see you, so be careful what you're doing.
All right.
But, uh, we have tonight, um, this special meeting was to specifically go through the COVID-19 economic aid package, and what we needed to do was approve this package, um, in its whole. But before we do, Ron, I wonder if you could take us through this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. First of all, there's some people I really need to thank who've just done a bang-up job. Courtney Liberato, Liz Francis, Ed Drystat, Debbie Bridges, and Sherri Willett, they helped me with this process, and they put in some long hours going through all of the applications. We had received, um, a total of 425 applications. 105 of those were from non-lodging businesses, and, um, 320 for the lodging businesses. Uh, if you recall, uh, the criteria that we had for the lodging businesses to how much would be awarded is that we'd look for the total number that were, uh, qualified, and then simply divide 400,000 by that number. In the end, there were 82, um, that received this. I visited with the mayor earlier, and I gave him the wrong number. There were 82, uh, that, uh, that were qualified in this. Most of the others, almost all of the others that weren't qualified is because they either did not have an occupational tax permit or had not been in business for a year or more. Uh, we did have a couple that just, that were, did not fit the criteria of the, uh, of the, um, uh, the qualifications that they needed to be on, uh, the governor's executive order. We did try to be, um, very liberal in our interpretation, so that we could stretch this as far as we possibly could and help as many people as we can. And so, um, you have, I had emailed to you, uh, the list of the non-lodging businesses. Um, each of them would, uh, receive, well, um, um, each of them would have a contract that will be going to them for the purchase of goods and services that Ed would then use at a later date to, uh, redeem on those goods and services, and he would use them as part of his marketing plans for the city. Uh, contract has been prepared, um, and, uh, as, uh, Ed will take the applications, where each of these individuals take it to them, um, they would need to then sign the contract, and he would redeem those, uh, uh, those items at a later date. So again, the amount for, that would be received by those is $4,878.05.
And as you recall, council, what we tried to make it as simple as possible is once determined the qualification, then simply to divide, uh, the big number into the eligible applicants. That's why the numbers are all the same, uh, per se.
The other, uh, so are there any questions about the non-lodging businesses? Okay, as far as the lodging businesses, you'll notice that on that list, there's just the names. Um, as Debbie and I were going through this, and she confirmed this with Richard, uh, this pro, this part of the program was based, again, on the purchase of goods and services that Ed would redeem at a later date, um, but the amount that would be awarded would be equal to the average of one month's gross room rent. Um, and that information is actually proprietary, and that's not, not information we give out. And so, um, after discussing this, we decided we better leave that, uh, leave that information out so that it, we're not giving away proprietary information. Um, of course, the highest that anybody received was $5,000. Um, the average, so we, in, in this ca, the average for these recipients is $3,222.11. Now, in this case, um, we went through, we began with each of the applications, and we went until we ran out of money. We had $235,000 that was allocated to the lodging businesses, and, um, there are 73. Um, and that takes you to a total of $235,000, $214.33. Uh, so we would have loved to have been able to help more, but we just simply ran out of, out of money. Now, interestingly enough, that is pretty close to what we had predicted. We were, we were estimating that we would be able to help, um, in both categories, a total of about 80 each. Um, with about 160, 160 that we would be able to help with the funds that we had. This comes out to 155. So I was pleased that our estimates, uh, came where we thought they were. It's unfortunate that we simply didn't have enough to spread it even farther. So there, so you have the list, then, of the lodging businesses, of the combination of hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and vacation rental dwellings. Now, um, the thing that we looked at on this, because we knew we were going to run out of money on this one, is that it, the, you have the qualifying factor, then you have first come, first served. And so we started with those that got their application first, looked for the qualifications for them, and then once we hit that point of 235,000, that's where we ended up. They also will be required, uh, to, uh, purchase, this is a purchase of goods and services, and, um, and they will be required to also sign that contract before the funds are released, and then Ed can use those monies to develop marketing packages in the future. Um, as we went through this, perhaps the biggest question that we heard from the different businesses was, are you going to flood us with a bunch of gift certificates that we have to redeem all at once? And Ed did his very best to let them know that this would be spread out over several years, um, and we would use it to maximize our opportunities to attract, uh, people to come to the city and to spend their money, and, uh, as we all know, i-if you come and stay in a place, you have to eat, so you'll go to a restaurant, you'll go to the grocery store, you'll go, and so there's a multiplier effect to that money, and that's what we'll be counting on to help benefit our, our community. Um, any questions on the, um, on the lodging businesses?
Mr. Huglen?
Um, this is not for the lodging, this is for the non-lodging. I thought we had decided, we were saying that the same people wouldn't be eligible for multiple things. Overnight Art and Scout Northwest are the same people. I understand it's two different businesses. Um, Overnight Art is an online thing that they, I believe, have... I don't know who, how they operate their thing, but I thought it was an international association of web developers or something that did that, and then, and then, I'm just now, I haven't been able to look at it, but the other one is Captain Clamorin's Excursions is based in Walport and Brookings. How did they get approved?
He, uh, does some of our explorances, and because of that, has an OTP in Lincoln City.
They're not, they're not in Lincoln City?
They had to be, yeah. They were supposed to be here.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't support that at all. His whole website is Brookings and Walport, doesn't say anything about Lincoln City. And that's just the two that I've seen. I haven't, Parish Pol... There's a lot of these that I'm not even familiar with, living here for over a decade. So, like, what's Parish Polishing's?
All of these have an occupational tax permit in the city.
Okay, I'm not comfortable with that only being the only criteria of a year thing. I don't, I don't, so, if we want to talk about that, I don't know, but...
The one, the one, um, so you had Overnight Art, who was the other one?
Parish Polishing's?
No, no, that you said was a duplicate?
Well, it's, it's Overnight Art and Scout Northwest are the, is the same family. Jerome came on the last council meeting, Jerome spoke to us and told us both of those businesses were his. And then Captain Clamorin's, and I haven't, I think that's all. But I'm sorry that I didn't have more time, I just got to looking at this, but, and then the Parish Polishing's, I don't know what that is. All the rest I recognize.
Please, where am I here? Chad, Bridgette.
And Deanna, did you have something to add to the, the non, or, non-lodging ones?
No, I had a lodging question.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, and then I thought Beth Towers was a city employee.
Who?
Beth Towers is a city employee. How is she, how is she a city employee and getting a, a, this? She's one of your rec, she's one of your rec members.
Right, but that's not a disqualifying factor.
Yeah. She's getting paid and also getting paid? She's getting paid throughout this time, and she's gonna get, uh...
Okay, uh, so, all I can say is, well, we, on all of these that you asked about, and the one that, the one that you brought up where there are two of them of the same ownership, we'll check on that. But, uh, all of these met the qualifying factors.
Okay, how are we giving a city employee for, almost $5,000 of Ed's marketing pro, package? I don't know, when I leave this meeting and have to explain that to people, I don't know how I'm gonna do that.
So, if we go back to our criteria, and, uh, as I recall that council meeting, there was, uh, an opportunity to throw out, and we did, all sorts of criteria, to where it was gonna take months to accomplish what we wanted, and that was to get cash in a, uh, register. So, at the end of the day, we ended up with very few issues. So, and it was about the business. It wasn't about the individual, it was about the business, because quite frankly, I don't recall, you know, more than limiting one business owner to a business. It was businesses that we were trying to help.
I think he specifically said, the family, the wife, the son, the whatever of the family.
I got, we, we nixed that up.
And now, now we're at where we're at, and I'm still not comfortable with some of what happened. I understand we tried to get this to go. Now we're here, and I'm still having difficulty with what I see.
Riley, I, I think what you'll find is we nixed that item out, because that was getting all sorts of, uh, questions around what's a family, how many families, all this stuff, and we went to a business. The business could apply.
So then help me understand how the business Beth Towers is a city employee?
Well, I, I don't know what the business is of, that Beth Towers has.
I don't...
So if, so that would be the question, not whether she's an employee of the city or not. So, do we know, uh, somebody?
I'm trying to pull that up.
Okay.
I do, I do not believe...
Go ahead, Debbie.
I do not believe Beth Towers is a, an employee. Uh, we pay her through accounts payable, and then she may have been at one time, but several years ago, we, um, changed those services to be contracted.
Okay, thank you.
So she's paid through AP, she's not paid through payroll.
Judy, you had a question on...
Well, I was just wondering what Parish Polishing was. Is it a glass float blower? Is it a nail salon? I'm trying to figure out what it is.
I can tell you that, uh, Beth Powers, uh, is the president of the Lincoln City Elementary Schools Parent Group. It's a domestic nonprofit. I can tell you that, uh, the Captain Clamorin's Excursions is based in Brookings, Oregon, and I could tell, this is on the Secretary of State's website, and I could tell you that Overnight Art is an inactive, a business name. Uh, it became inactive this month, which is, uh, registered to Jerome Black.
And what do we know about Parish Polishing?
Uh, I'll look him up, hold on.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Deanna? Uh, are you, you have a lodging question?
Yeah.
Non-business or non-lodging questions? Uh, Riley, back to you?
It is on the lodging.
Okay, okay, let's wait on the lodging. So...
I, if I could just add one, one, um, thing, is I remember what Riley does, that it wasn't... Anyway, I guess we passed that, because this Beth person is, um, a contract employee.
Right.
But, a contract employee, is that not in the list of, that we talked about? I mean, I, I have that memory. Secondly, I have the memory that it had to be a Lincoln City business, and had to have the tax, um, the occupational tax permit.
And it had to be a business that was identified in the governor's executive order to close.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume, and that's, you're right in asking for clarification, so that's all we need. What, what's the business that was closed?
So, Beth Towers is, she does have an occupational tax permit, uh, doing business as Towers Training, um...
Right.
And I have the other one, too. Parish Polishing's, we have paid them for doing, uh, cleaning costs in the culinary center, so I think they're a cleaning company.
Okay.
Okay. So then the, the only question, then, of, I think what I've heard for clarification, is where a business is housed? Um, they could be, uh, located somewhere else, or headquartered somewhere else, but have a Lincoln City operation? Is that, and if they have an occupancy permit, tax? That's a business in Lincoln City? Riley, you look like you wanna talk.
I just, I, I hear what you're saying, but when we make quick decisions to incorporate all of this, this is what we have, and I'm still not about saying no to someone's business who was open to, for 10 months, and then give money to some guy, a business that's in Brookings. I'm not comfortable with that, and I don't think that, that accurately portrays what this economic package is supposed to be. So...
So, um, I, I think there, we asked staff with the directions we gave them to make some decisions and call, and they obviously did, based on the number of applications down to, you know, uh, in this case, 84. And, you know, the, you, you're right in asking for clarifications on some of your questions, but I would say, given what we gave them, you know, it, it's there, so I...
I might, I might point out that everybody that, everybody that qualified because they had an occupational tax permit is receiving funding in the non-lodging business area.
Okay.
Uh, and there's only two or three that did not qualify for something other than not having an occupational tax permit.
I, I can tell you that, uh, Parish, my own, Parish Polishing does not have a state registration, and, uh, the, the individual you mentioned, uh, I searched by name. I can't find the, uh, consulting or training organization that she apparently said has an OTP for. Our OTP ordinance requires that you be registered with the Secretary of State.
Well, Parish Polishing's does have an OTP, so...
I can't find them in the state.
Well, that wouldn't be the first time the state doesn't have a computer system working, right? So, Ron, you look like you're looking something up.
Oh, I'm just making notes.
Okay.
So, there was a final third part of this program, and these funds have been distributed. This was the Feeding the Needy Program, and, uh, Council Casper is the, uh, moving force behind that, so if, uh, if you'd like to explain that, that'd be great.
Uh, wait a minute, I gotta get my, you want me to explain? Um, hold on, just a minute. My secretary's been busy. Yes, um, we awarded, um, some assistance on Friday. The, um, Eagles, we gave them a check for, um, $14,600, and $600 was to reimburse my sweet petite, and 800 was for Dable Baby.
Hey Judy?
Yes.
So can we just go with, um, the nonprofit is Eagles?
Yep.
And Eagles is, uh, contracting with others to do, you know, services?
Yes.
On their behalf, so that the money is actually going to Eagles?
Yes.
Right, and?
$14,600.
Okay.
Um, St. James received $4,500. Shiloh received $1,000. Um, Backpack for Kids, $7,733. Food Pantry, $7,733. Family Promise, $7,733. Neighbors for Kids, $2,900.
And Marcy's?
Um, she declined.
Oh, really? Okay.
She suggested to give it, um, to another nonprofit, you know, sometime in the future, or, um...
Okay. Um, Deanna?
I have a question. Um, on the, um, information that Ron gave us, he said that the Backpack for Kids, Food Pantry, um, Family Promise receives $7,333, and Judy, you just said $7,733, which is it?
Um, where did you see seven, what did you see? I don't know.
I wrote based on our correspondence. Debbie, how much did we write on those checks?
Sorry, $7,733.
Sorry, my, my fault. $7,733.
Thank you. All right. And you've distributed, uh, those, Judy, and?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much for hitting that up.
Sure, and that came to, uh, eight, six, 46,199. Everyone was very appreciative, by the way.
I'll bet. Were there, uh, questions? We didn't, uh, open up for the lodging. Deanna, I think you had a lodging question?
I did, now if I can remember what it is, just a second. I'd forgotten, I'll see if I can remember.
While you're thinking of that, the highest amount that, of course, that we gave was $5,000. The lowest amount that would be awarded is 134. The lowest amount that would be awarded is a hundred and thirty-four.
And Ron was, uh, out of these, uh, let's see, you said a hundred and, um, three hundred and twenty applications? And so, did any get kicked out, uh, other than first come, first served?
Yeah, we had a few, um, that, again, they lacked an occupational tax permit or they had not been in business, uh, more than a year.
A year, okay.
Can, can I inject something before we totally leave? Um, something on back to non-lodging?
Okay.
There's a business here that's not been in business for a year? I hate to say that.
And you wanna share that with us?
Um, on page three, uh, Talunate? It's like the last paragraph, second from the top.
Oh, yeah. And based on the, I would assume, occupancy permit or something? What, what would we use to establish?
Well, I thought they had to be in business for more than a year.
Yeah.
Right, Ron? And these, these poor folks just set up, I think in January or February.
Yeah, they were also at the Red Cock before they moved to the current location. And I don't know if they're under the same OTP or not. I'd have to go back and look.
Are you talking about T-A-H-L-U-M-E?
Yeah.
We have, uh, they've had an occupational tax permit since August twenty-two, twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, okay.
Really? Where, where are they?
Uh, okay.
They, they, uh-
I don't know.
They, uh, in the Red Cock, and, uh, they moved from there to their current location.
Oh, all right, well, good. Glad to know.
Deanna?
I remember my lodging question.
Good.
Which is pretty simple. Um, Ron mentioned how many, um, how many were, um, VRDs or how many were hotels or motels? Did you break that down? I thought I heard it, but I didn't write it down.
I don't have that broken down. I can send that to you, but I don't have that broken down right now.
Just curious, um...
Again, that wasn't in the criteria, so...
No, I was curious as to how-
Yeah.
-it breaks out, and I didn't wanna make my own list.
Yep. Um, Mitch, you patiently waiting there?
Yeah, um, I was wondering, we explained about how we got the amounts for lodging and non-lodging. How'd we come to the amounts for the nonprofits? They're all different.
Council Casper?
Um, we took the needs of the three, immediate needs of the three groups that I spoke to. And then the others, we divvied up what was left. Backpack, Food Pantry, Family Promise, and Neighbors for Kids. And I took the remainder of that money, and that's how that became that. And, um, Neighbors for Kids and Marcy's I divided. And Marcy's declined. So, there is the option, you could give that other twenty-nine hundred dollars to Neighbors for Kids or not.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
Uh, Neighbors for Kids is very grateful for what it received. I would like to see that, that speaking, if I, can I speak as a board member? Uh, I, I'm confident that they would be happy to see that go to, spread out to some other worthy cause.
Versus adding to their check? Are they, are you saying they don't need the refund or reimbursement for food and ongoing?
I, I think, I think the money could, for instance, I don't know why Shiloh received, of course, they received a big grant from us last year. Um, and you came a little short of, of the fifty thousand, so there's, there was more money than, I mean, there's money that was allocated that wasn't, that was only distributed.
Um, that's the twenty-nine hundred.
Oh, was it?
We were given a maximum amount of money.
Fifty thousand.
Came as close to spending it as all as I possibly could figure out.
Mm-hmm. Well, if you can't think of anything better to do than give the money for Neighbors for Kids, it will be also gratefully accepted. I'm just saying that I wouldn't feel obliged to do that.
Okay.
Well, this, this was intended, Judy, uh, this was intended to help those nonprofits that have been stepping up or groups stepping up to feed those hungry during this time.
Yes.
And it was our way of, um, trying to identify, uh, because this, quite frankly, wasn't an application process. It's, uh, Judy did research and tried to call who's doing it. Um, and so this is the group, correct?
If, if you have extra, I would, I would suggest giving it to the Food Pantry. Um, there's a lot of food that needs to be spread out to our community.
So, you're the one who has extra? So, if you wanna give that to the Food Pantry, that's your call.
Um, it's a group decision.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
So, why don't we, uh, could I entertain a motion to amend the recommendation on the Feeding the Needy to apply the, uh, remainder of twenty-nine hundred dollars to the Food Pantry account?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second for Mitch? Thank you, Mitch. Um, all, well, it's money, so roll call vote?
Can we restate the motion again?
Yes, to apply the twenty-nine hundred dollars in the Feeding the Needy account that was fifty thousand. So, there's twenty-nine hundred dollars, apply that to the Food Pantry account.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Sorry, I didn't. Roll call, Kathy?
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper? Yes. Benton? Yes. Oakland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um...
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm back at, you know, we're supposed to be entering into contracts for, uh, materials and services for tourism promotion. And one of the-
Actually, the fifty thousand was in tourist and promotion TRT money.
No, no, I, I, yeah.
Okay.
That's a nonprofit, yeah, I understand completely. Um, so I'm back at the contracts for, uh, services for, that have to be appropriate under the TRT restrictions. And when it says, subject to our standard contract, I wrote the contract. It has recitations in there about this is for tourism promotion. Um, can someone tell me what Beth Powers's company is doing for tourism promotion? It's, you said, uh, now, it's not listed with the Secretary of State, so we don't enter into contracts with people that have entities that are not listed with the Secretary of State. Um, so that would apply to both, uh, Beth Powers, who's not a business, or that's just an individual, and, uh, Parish Polishing, who's not listed. So, number one, they'd have to be listed. But I, I need to know what Beth Powers and Parish Polishing is doing for, oh, and Overnight Art is also an inactive assumed business. I'd have to correct that before we'd sign a contract with them. But I, with all of these, I, certainly Ms. Powers and Parish Polishing, what is the tourism promotion service that we're purchasing?
Beth Powers does a, uh, does, uh, training, um, she's an independent contractor that does training, uh, at the fitness center, um, exercise training, uh, uh, those kind of things. Uh, so I guess, Ed, can you add that? Can you make that a part of the marketing package? We're, we're gonna be getting very creative with a lot of what we have. Um, so, uh, short answer would be, yes, we'll, uh, figure out a way to build, uh, personal training into, uh, some sort of outdoor adventure, physical, some kind of experience here in Lincoln City. Um, I'll make it work.
And, and are, do we have a contract with her, with, right now, with the community center? Is that?
You know, those, I've got this same list of things. And Mayor, I'm just wondering if those are things we need to deal with his staff? I recognize that if somebody doesn't have the, the state, they're not registered with the state, then we have a problem. Uh, we'll-
I mean, you can, you can be a sole proprietor, uh, Ron, and it's okay. Uh, we would simply contract with the sole proprietor and, and the services would be, you know, trainer. Uh, but I, you know, if you use an assumed business name, then, uh, you have to be registered. So, I-
I recognize that. My point is, is that those are things that if you guys, if the council approves it, we've been identified some problems with some of these ones. Uh, if you wanted to, if you are comfortable with saying, let's go forward, and you make a motion except to go in and check these and make sure that they're all legal and meet all the criteria, then the staff will take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Mark?
So, the corollary, I guess, is there, do we have the option of saying that certain businesses that we've already identified actually do not qualify for whatever, one of these reasons that we're talking about? And, um, then we, we do not spend that money on those few businesses? And what happens to that money? And I have a suggestion.
Well, the way I would answer that is, in your motion, you approve this list as recommended, ask staff to, um, further identify that they're legal entities and meet, uh, the state, and Mr. Appicello can help us. Uh, and if not, to not issue a check to them. So, in essence, we're having staff, uh, once again, check for the criteria.
Yeah, if it turns out they don't meet the contracting requirements, then we'll report back to you that, uh, we have this money left over.
Or the other thing that you could do, um, which makes a lot of sense to me since we had such a limited number of, of, uh, uh, non-lodging businesses, take whatever's left over, put it towards the lodging businesses, and we might be able to add another couple onto that.
That was gonna be my suggestion.
Okay. Um, Mr. Oakland?
So, in, in that same thing, you know, a clean getaway, Parish Polishing, Polishings, you know, these are cleaning companies? And, um, uh, Calm Connections is based in Otis. So, I don't know, like, that would fall within that same, you know, these are Lincoln City businesses or not Lincoln City businesses? And, um, one of the things that I felt was important is that, you know, their March and April two thousand nineteen didn't equate to the number that we're gonna be purchasing from them. And now, you know, they'll have the, you know, the best, or, and, and it's not, you know, with a limit. Maybe they do more than that, you know? Maybe they do more than twenty-five hundred dollars a month in those two months, you know, that everything's been shut down. And so now we're going, I thought part of this was to prevent them from getting more than they would have made in that same thing. Now we don't have, it's just like, nah, here's, here's all this money that, you know, we've just divided because these, the standard, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm still not comfortable with that, um, that thing, you know? Does Parish Polishings do twenty-five hundred dollars a month in cleaning services? What did you say? They clean what? They clean their culinary center? So, and why are we, why are we paying somebody to clean our culinary center on top of that?
Hey, they don't clean the culinary center. Um, Culinary Center has used them for some laundry.
Okay, you know, I, I just think in Motel Six is on the other list also. I thought we were not doing international, you know? So, why did that get approved? So, like, basically, whatever the process was that staff had, I'm not comfortable with any of this. And I don't wanna vote at all on this, knowing that there's already been five in the twenty-five minutes that we've all been talking about it, or whatever the number is.
And Riley, I could say, we're never gonna make you happy, quite frankly.
That's not true. It's not about happiness. It's not me.
So, your answer ought to be vote no. The idea, if I can take you back to the council meeting, was we're, we were intent on getting money into the register. And all the things you're talking about are great ideas, and we could be like the federal government and take four months to get money out of the hands.
I disagree.
So, there are gonna be mistakes, and there are gonna be someone who, you know, is unhappy that you, they, somebody else got more than they did.
We're not the federal government at all. We're doing this on our own, for our own people. We have eighty-five businesses, or whatever the number is. If we don't have time to look through it all, and what we as the city are doing is telling people, eh, it's close enough. I don't support, eh, it's close enough, the people. Because on the other side of the people that didn't get the money, that they weren't open, they were eleven months open, they're heartbroken. And they're gonna watch this and go, well, that's bullshit. That's ridiculous because of what happened. And I don't wanna support that. It isn't, it isn't so extreme.
Okay. Deanna, you have your hand up?
Well, I was just curious. Uh, I'm still stuck on Beth Powers. And, um, are there other contractors with the city that fit the, um, category of?
Well, let's, let's-
I'm just trying to noodle this out. So, what's your overhead? What is, what, I mean?
Wait a minute.
Not the same, excuse me, it's not the same as a restaurant. It's not the same as even the bookstore who have lights to turn on and, and heat to heat their building and employees to pay. It's not the same thing. I would not put those in the same category.
Okay, so let me help you again.
You don't need, it's-
Deanna, hold on. This was a application process. We notified the world to make an application. Ron got a whole bunch of applications, and our instructions to him and staff were the governor's executive order, identify those only. And, you know, others, you know, get kicked out. It was a way to get the pool down. So, I could clearly see a trainer in a gym, tied to a gym, that got shut down by the executive order, you losing revenue. So, you know, and to, to say, were there other trainers that applied? I don't know, because somebody, obviously, they didn't want to. But we went through the list who met that criteria. So, you can keep reaching, and we can extend this on for another month, and invite, you know, everybody. Uh, or you can, you know, as Judy has done in a quick turn, you know, she got money into the hands of people that are feeding others. You? So, Mr. Mark?
Uh, first of all, the, to the, the question about, um, Motel Six, we, we changed, when we finally voted, we agreed to allow, uh, national chains to be, uh, qualified. So, that, that, that's a, not an issue. Uh, I, I do have a concern about some businesses. I don't know, maybe someone who does training at the gym feels like a reach, but a, a cleaning service, if that's what that is, I don't know how, uh, we, I don't know how that becomes part of a tourist package, which was Mr. Appicello's point. Uh, so, I, I mean, I think it's worth, you know, looking at a couple of those a little more closely. Uh, and I have this broader question, which is, I don't know if it's ever gonna be possible to do some other version of this down the line, another go-around that we could do strictly for the lodging to try to, uh, help more of those businesses. Uh, I don't know if there's, now's the time to talk about that, but I don't know if there's a way to do that. But I, I'd like to find a way to do that.
Um, and Mr. Appicello, you had something you wanted to?
Just, um, as was stated by, uh, Councilor Mark, uh, the most important criterion, setting aside Riley's concerns, the, the most important criterion for you all should be that the TRT funds are being used appropriately. The contract says this is for tourism promotion, and staff has reviewed these. Hopefully with the eye toward, these contracts are going to meet the criterion for TRT use. If they don't, we shouldn't go forward. Um, and I, I think that you could go forward and say, okay, subject to standard contract practices, and- Um, and I, I think that you could go forward and say, okay, subject to standard contract practices, and maybe caution staff to review the, the TRT issue, and if there's any question, maybe run it by the auditors to make sure that there's, they're not going to object. Because I had my concern, not so much about the personal trainer, but about, because I can see how that could be used, but for the cleaning service, I'm not sure how that's being proposed. Maybe they spelled it out in their application, I don't know. But the contract's going to require them to explain what tourism promotion services they are providing.
Right.
And if that doesn't meet muster, then I would expect that the city manager wouldn't sign it, they would kick it back to the council and say, you know what? We've rethought this. Well, I think you can go forward, I just, I just think you need to give staff that caveat, because you're signing off on the expenditure of TRT funds, and you'll be personally liable if it's not an appropriate expenditure.
Okay. I think that's good, good guidance, and, uh, you know, what that would do is, is have that next level of assurance. So if, if, uh, someone, and, uh, Councilor Mark, to your suggestion, any funds, um, not expended in this category, you could even include it to go over to the lodging industry applicants, to add, add new ones.
So what kind of motion are we looking for?
No, I, I would say a motion to approve the, uh, non-lodging business, uh, list recommended by staff. Uh, caution them to, uh, confirm with the contracts that the recipient is able to provide tourism-related services. And any excess funds from this block of money, we transfer to the lodging branch.
I, I would, I, I would make that motion, I would add also that the staff should confirm that the occupational tax permit is, uh, meets all the requirements.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion with a second from Mr. Parsons. Discussion.
Um, I have a question.
Okay.
If we pass these, when, when will this be disseminated?
As soon as they can make the final check on those that are in question, right, Ron?
Yeah, as soon as we, um, um, have a contract in, uh, in hand, it's been signed by the business, they will get a check.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Kathy, could you do a roll call, please?
Judy Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
She muted.
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Can we, can we restate the motion, please?
Seriously, and, and, and this is going to be huge. I don't care what you guys have, that may not be one, but it, I'm going to be in McKay's market answering to this.
Okay. So this is, uh, the motion was to approve the recommended list recipients of the non-lodging businesses. Have, ask staff to do another level of, um, clarification that these businesses meet the criteria, including Secretary of State, and as they sign their contract, that they're able to clarify that their, uh, tourist-related credit back is appropriate. And, uh, also that their, um, uh, occupancy tax, uh, permit is in place.
Is this going to come back to us for a final go-ahead? Or this is, this is the vote that after this, whatever it is, that's what it's going to be?
That's correct.
There was one addition, that if, if people do not qualify, their services are not tourism-related, any money left over would be shifted to the lodging.
Good point. I forgot that.
Was that, was that amending the motion?
No, it was in the original motion, I just didn't repeat it. I forgot it.
Um.
Say no. That's how you go, yes or no?
I know, I hear you, but it's not that easy for my, my brain.
Okay.
I'll vote, I'll vote yes, if, under those conditions.
Uh, Diane Kuz?
No.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, did I get the vote?
Oh.
We're first.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes, please.
Now the motion carries.
All right. Okay, so now we've got the, uh, lodging industry, uh, column. Um, and the only, I, I would say the motion here is to approve the recommended list. Um, if any new, it's kind of the same caveat with the contract, you know, that they clearly understand that they'll be giving credit back to a, uh, tourist-related, but that's pretty obvious, being from the lodging industry. And that, uh, the list could be expanded if there's funds coming across from the non-lodging, um, tranche with the, with your, uh, list, Ron, of, um, recipients who didn't make the cut from time sequence, dollar sequence. Entertain a motion, Deanna?
Um, I don't, I have a question before we, before we move there, just to go back. I was just curious about, um, Councilor Kuz's vote, and wondered if she wanted to let us know why she voted no.
That'd be up to her.
No.
Okay, that's fine. So, uh, motion?
Uh, I will move to, um, to distribute the, um, money as designated to the lodging businesses on the list, with the, uh, understanding that if there's money left over from the non-lodging fund, it would add more businesses to the lodging list.
Is there a second? We have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Mr. Parsons, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, Kathy?
Hoagland? Counselor Hoagland? Uh, Kuz?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Um, and we've done the Feeding the Needy, thank you Judy again. And I, I assume this would be the same, uh, time sequence, Ed, getting the contract signed and then distributing checks?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Um, any questions on these? Again, I'd like to, you know, thank staff certainly for the work, you know, we don't always make it easy for them. Um, but the key, I think, from our last council meeting was to do it quickly. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure it will be appreciated by those who do receive, uh, checks. So, Miss Hinton, you have a question?
Oh, just a simple one. Do these go through the same kind of, um, background check as the other, as the non-lodging? Do we check them for their occupational license? Do we check them for their, um, state? Um, Mr. Appicello called it the secretary's, um, list of active names?
We've done this on the occupational tax permit, we'll add the state, um, we'll add the state part as well.
Okay, thanks.
And just out of curiosity, Ron, when we find, uh, businesses without the occupancy, is it just a timing issue that they've been, had it before, or they haven't had it at all? Has it, has it expired, and they just don't have a current one, or?
Uh, it's, it's been both. We found through this process of some that has expired, and others didn't have it in the first place, so it's a little bit of both.
So a nice reminder then, and it's a way of letting them know we expect the occupancy.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. All right. Um, that's our agenda. It is, uh, four fifty-six, and I understand from Tony that he needs, uh, five minutes to get us to the budget committee meeting. So, uh, given no other business, I would say we're adjourned for the budget committee meeting.
Tony, do we all stay online?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I was going to-
Thank you all.
Let everyone know that.